Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the July 27th session of the Bellingham City Council. Before we go any further tonight, I'm going to turn it over to Councilman Bornerman.
Yeah. On July 4th, our community lost a dear friend and advocate, Dennis Lane. Dennis was one of the earliest and consistent advocate of public access radio, TV, of low-power radio, an advocate for getting technology to poor children, working with Opportunity Council and others. He was an advocate of giving a voice to people who didn't always have a voice. So I would like for you to join me in a moment of silence in the memory of Dennis Lane.
Thank you all very much. Thank you. Okay, call the meeting to order. We're going to have a pledge of allegiance with Bob and Barbara Hartnell lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
(Clerk) Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Terry Bornerman.
Here.
Dan Hamill.
Here.
Jean Knudsen.
Here.
Michael Lillquist.
Here.
Roxanne Murphy.
Here.
Pinky Vargas.
Here.
Jack Weiss.
Here.
Okay, before we get started, we are in for a long evening tonight, ladies and gentlemen. We have a lot of people that have signed up. We're going to start with 15-minute public comment period, and a quarter after, we're going to stop the comment period. We're going to go directly to the public hearing and get through that, then we'll reopen public comment after that. And you're going to have three minutes in both instances, both the public comment and both public hearings, so we can get through everybody. And it's fair for everybody, and that's the way we're going to do it. So I'll start off. Elizabeth has a timer, and I have a timer also, so we're going to be a little bit stricter than normal. Okay, the first name on the list is James. Frank Youngblood and Judy Collins.
Respectable Mayor, esteemed council members, and my fellow citizens, my name is James. I'm a homeless combat vet who has been in some form of homelessness since May 1st, 2010, who wish to educate city council and the public about the systemic contributions to homelessness as thus far the system film project homeless in Bellingham fails to do so. The core value which drives me to speak to how the system contributes to homelessness is objectivity. A couple of weeks before my first appearance before you on July 11th, 2015, I stopped by Catholic Housing Services to see if I would be able to rent an apartment. Upon me meeting the CHS rental manager, I informed her that I was homeless and hoping to rent an apartment. She said, "That's great because CHS helps the homeless." I was pleased to hear that statement because I thought I might be speaking with someone who had an empathetic ear for homeless citizens. After all, housing for human beings is not an entitlement, rather a critical, basic need in order to survive. Please understand, I've never wanted to be homeless, but am so primarily as a result of the economic downturn, which was a systemic contribution. I'm nearly 64 years old, and have lived in an apartment the majority of my life. I have always returned an apartment back in the same or better condition than when I received it, to the best of my memory. I have always received my full security deposit back. To the best of my knowledge, a neighbor has never lodged a complaint against me. I have excellent credit, generally pay my bills in advance, I have passed and can pass a background check, I have not addicted to drugs or alcohol, I have never failed a drug testing, can pass another one. I have no legal issues, I have no psychological issues, I'm not a sexual predator, I'm not a fugitive from paying child support, I have no trouble making or keeping appointments or managing my affairs. I strive to be honest, personally responsible and accountable. Most small children, animals tend to like me. Depending on the cost of the CHS studio apartment, I like to have a security deposit first and last month's rent. Indeed, depending on the cost of the apartment, I may be able to pay the first year's rent if I chose to do so. I have many other positive qualities. Want to know why CHS would not rent me an apartment? As a combat vet who has been homeless for five years, I do not have two current years of rental history. This is a systemic contribution example as to why others and I are still homeless. I've sent the Pope a letter. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, James. Frank Youngblood, then Judy Collins, and Ann Mackey.
I apologize in advance for the-
Get in front of the mic, sir, so we can hear you.
I apologize in advance for the obvious misspelling of Holly Street. It sounds, I think it may be a Freudian mistake, maybe. My name is Frank Youngblood. I am the owner of the 19-unit apartment building known as Stevens Court on the southeast corner of Indian and Holly Streets. The address is 1230 Indian Street. I live there with my family and have been fortunate enough to be the caretaker, if you will, of this historic building for 26 years, and as such, Indian Street has become a big part of who I am. Quote, "I believe in the sun and the stars, the water, the tides, the floods, the owls, the hawks flying, the river running, the wild, the wind talking. They're measurements. They tell us how healthy things are, how healthy we are, because we and they are the same. That's what I believe in," unquote. That's Billy Frank. I relate deeply to this, to this idea. Wherever anyone lives, there are outward measurements that tell us how healthy we are. We are a reflection of our environment and become in union with it, and we can either raise it up or destroy it, ignore it, and ultimately go up or down with it. Reading about Mr. Frank and what he saw to improve, restore, and elevate in his realm of experience has inspired me to come to you this evening and ask you to help me do the same thing with the current environment along Indian Street, especially if you are intent on placing Billy Frank Jr.'s name above the street and in this way, his spirit, as it gazes down upon what this environment really has become. I have worked hard to restore and improve 1230 Indian Street, but I have little control over what I see happening outside every night and day. The section of Indian Street between Holly and Chestnut is so torn up with cracks, salt cuts, and potholes that the Blue Line buses banging through them feel like earthquakes rumbling through our neighborhood all day long. I showed Billy Dorn from Public Works Operations how worn out this section of Indian Street really is, and he agreed that this entire section needs to be scraped and repaved, so much so that he scheduled Indian Street to be done this summer. I was ecstatic over the news. Unfortunately, Freeman Anthony, street department engineer, overruled that decision two months later. Lack of funds. After the WT buses finish their runs at 10:45 PM, we then have to listen to the university student shuttle buses cruising up and down Indian Street until 2:30 every night as they pick up packs of students who wait at the Blue Line bus stop, shouting, cursing, running through the intersections oblivious to their surroundings. People vandalize parked cars, use landscape areas as bathrooms, leaving empty beer bottles in their wake, and yet, you want to put Billy Frank Jr.'s name above this mess. There's only way this could make sense. Use this opportunity to take a look at a more comprehensive way to honor not only Mr. Frank, but all indigenous peoples of this area. First, finish the job of scraping and repaving Indian Street between Chestnut and Holly Streets. This is the north entrance to the U after all. The U might have an interest in contributing to making Indian Street an outdoor self-guided walking tour of the history of the indigenous peoples in this area. Laurel Park could be renamed Billy Frank Junior Park with native art and historical information. A walk down Indian Street from the university could include historical embedded plaques in the sidewalks, arriving freshman students-
Time's up, sir. Thank you very much. We've got the letter here. We'll read the rest of it.
All right. I tried. That's hard to do.
I know it is. It's not easy. Judy Collins, Ann Mackey, and Tom Slocum. I think we're going to get through all the names that are signed up, and then we'll go on to the public hearing. Go ahead, Judy.
I brought y'all a map so you can see where my property is in comparison to the city limits sign and the UGA. As you all know, I've been trying to get city water to my property on the Horton Road for quite a while. I feel like the council has been helpful and supportive, but I still don't have city water. But that does not mean that I'm going to give up. I would however like to be considered to be part of the UGA. I think it would benefit me in the long run, in years to come, and if I don't get into the UGA now, when do you redo this? In seven years or nine years or something? So I would really like to get in the UGA now. Even if I don't get city water, I need to be in UGA. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Ann Mackey, Tom Slocum, and Sarah Sutton.
My name is Ann Mackey, and I live in the York neighborhood. I'm a member of the York Neighborhood Board, and I'm speaking tonight just to submit an additional 61 signatures on a petition initiated by our York Neighborhood Association to address concerns about new construction in the York National Historic District. On June 15th, the representative from York submitted 250 signatures on this petition, so that brings the total to just over 300 interested folks who want to address concerns regarding two houses proposed to be built that were advertised on Craigslist as seven-bedroom houses renting for $3,500 a month per house, $500 per person. And we believe that this was an intended, perhaps, violation of the zoning of the neighborhood to put new boarding houses in a single-family zone. And so I'm going to just turn these in to you, and I know that the city council and planning director are beginning to address our concerns. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ann. Tom Slocum, Sarah Sutton, and Wendy Harris, and Kay Sardo is the last name.
Good evening. My name is Tom Slocum. I live at 2752 Broadway. I currently serve on the Greenways Advisory Committee, but my comments tonight are strictly my own personal opinion. I'd like to urge the council to not rush into scheduling a vote on the next Greenways levy for this fall, but instead delay it till next spring or next year sometime. I think it's worthwhile to take more time to develop ideas to try to improve the benefit and the strategic nature of project funding decisions. I think that the recent, some recent Greenways III spending decisions have strayed from the Greenway strategic plans focused on linking conservation lands, recreational lands, all around the city. Recent Parks Department and City Emphasis has been on, seems to have been on, some big development projects and big acquisitions, some of which weren't even included in the Greenway strategic plan and don't fully meet the purpose of the strategic plan. I personally don't want to see the next Greenway program continue this trend, but to go back to the original purpose. I believe it would serve the city to slow down and take a broader view of what the next Greenways program could do. It could be more expansive, for example, like allowing land trusts or other community organizations to participate in identifying and negotiating projects. It could set up procedures for ensuring projects with the highest benefit for meeting all the Greenway goals are funded instead of the more sort of opportunistic approach of some recent decisions. I applaud the city council for its stand on trying to make the county jail issue more expansive and serve many purposes, and I think it's worthwhile to take a similar prudent and creative approach to planning a more expansive new Greenways program. Thanks for your attention.
Thank you very much, Tom. Sarah Sutton, Wendy Harris, and last is Kay Sardo.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Sutton. I'm a volunteer at Northern Cross Collective Garden, and I just wanted to bring to the council's attention the impacts of Senate Bill 5052 on the medical marijuana community, especially here in Bellingham. We have a very, very strong medical marijuana community here. There's a lot of, lot of patients, and what Senate Bill 5052 will do is basically cut off access for medical patients and replace it with access for anyone over 21. And that would be great, except for recreational marijuana uses, many pesticides and herbicides that would compromise the immune system of a lot of our sick patients. So the medicine that the recreational community would be providing would not be adequate, and it would be out of their price range. So we have a lot of patients terrified coming to us crying, "How am I going to get my medicine?" Especially the older individuals who, they're too scared to ask anybody out of our community. They're not, they're probably going to have to go without it, you know? And there's the possibility of the black market becoming larger as a result of this. And so, you know, we can't control what happens at a state level, but in our community, I wanted to express, you know, on behalf of hundreds of patients, our wish to preserve medical marijuana in Bellingham at least, and keep access available to the current patients. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Wendy Harris and Kay Sardo.
Wendy Harris, I'm here to talk about Lake Wadcom and to ask the city to be more forthcoming with its policies and to lay all its cards on the table, because I think some important policy changes are being made that aren't being discussed. One of my biggest concerns, I learned about at the State of the Lake forum we have every year, where I learned that for the first time, because the city and the county have adopted new stormwater standards that are being treated as, and this was the word John Hutchings used, ostensibly protective, there is no longer a penalty against growth. Growth is now considered phosphorus-neutral, so that there's nothing that is preventing us from going ahead and growing and thinking that there's impacts to the lake. And that's a little bit crazy. And I spoke with the DOE engineer, Steve Hood, after, and he confirmed with, he confirmed to me that yes, in fact, because the city and county adopted stormwater standards which haven't been statistically analyzed, and there isn't sufficient data to actually establish that it's preventing phosphorus runoff in excess of a naturally forested condition. Even though we don't have that information, they're still treating it as if those stormwater standards work 100%, so we can continue to grow, and it won't affect the amount of, the percentage that we're required to restore the watershed to as if it was still in a fully forested condition. That's a big deal, and I'm looking at current city policies. We don't talk about restricting growth in the watershed anymore. It's a big deal. We've never had a discussion about that. What I heard today, talking about the AIS and boat inspection program, was policies that are basically promoting more tourism and recreation. The idea that we should be concerned that boaters don't have enough money to pay the inspection fees was very alarming to me. Fishing tournaments introduce invasive species. We don't know what fishermen are using on their hook, what kind of bait. I'm concerned where stocking non-native fish in the lake. These are all things we should be concerned about. And, you know, the thing that concerns me most is this approach that we're taking, which is sort of issue by issue, is not best available science. We really have to look at the lake as an integrated ecosystem that functions synergistically, and we can't just pull out stormwater as one function and just look at phosphorus, or look at invasive species over here, or algae over here. You know, you can't say the lake's getting better if there's less phosphorus going into the lake while at the same time, there's more algae being produced. So can we please have a community conversation? Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Last name on the list is Kay Sardo. Then we'll go to our public hearing.
Good evening. I'm Kay Sardo, and I live and vote here in Bellingham, and I'm here this evening to thank you for many things. First, for your recognition of my soulmate, Dennis Lane, and his tireless work to give voice and knowledge to people, especially low-income youths and seniors who have little, both through public access television and access to broadband computer hookups, both here and in Harlem, New York. Dennis' heart and vast knowledge was always working on ways to help others get more information and fresh food, his years of volunteering at the Farm Fund allocations committee, for instance. Second, thank you and our mayor for your careful work to hear our public voice, to assure that our tax dollars are used in the interests of the entire community, including those who have so little voice. I'm speaking of your careful consideration of alternatives to incarceration before pouring more into enlarging lockup and perhaps feeding the growing incarceration industry. I think we can and will find ways to use local solutions here in Bellingham, where so many knowledgeable professionals and committed community are stepping up to bring housing first and mental health resources. I'm reminded of the days when Interfaith Health Center grew out of a profound community need and our faith communities. Thank you again for serving so carefully and patiently, and I know we can all make a difference here in spite of the pressures to toss money into something consultants who have much to gain say we should. Thank you.
Thank you, Kay. Thank you all very much. We will now go to our one and only public hearing. It's consideration of a new 20-year population and employment growth forecast and potential changes to Bellingham's urban growth boundary.
I'm Greg Ockett from the Planning Department. With me tonight is Planning Director Rick Sepler, and also Chris Beehe and Lisa Poole from our staff are here as well to listen to the testimony. Could somebody get the lights for me, please? Thanks, Terry.
Turn the volume up a little bit. Greg's so soft spoken.
That's it? I'll try and talk loudly. We're going to do a fairly brief staff presentation tonight. I wanted to summarize for you the information that we presented to the Planning Commission over four meetings. So this is a summary. Your packet contains many of the details. None of this information is really new. There are some folks here in the audience who've heard this before, but this is the council's first, first meeting on this issue. Let me go back.
Greg, before you go any further, just to those who have not signed up, as soon as we get done with the list, we'll ask everybody to line up, so don't worry if your name's not on the list. Go ahead, Greg.
Yeah. So we'll talk briefly about the population growth forecasts, growth capacity and constraints, the alternatives that were considered by the Planning Commission, staff and Planning Commission recommendations, and we wanted to reinforce the notion that there won't be a decision tonight by the council. We're willing to be surprised, but we expect that it will get assigned to committee. So we wanted to make that clear right at the outset. In terms of background, this is not the first time that we have talked about population growth forecasts. We did so beginning back in 2012. This conversation really started. All of the cities in the county agreed to, we entered into an inter-local agreement and hired Burke Consulting to do some background research for us to develop 20-year population and employment growth forecasts and allocations to the various cities, and also to do some environmental analysis. Recommendations from this group are due to the county council by the end of this month, or by the end of August, sorry. With respect to population growth forecasts and UGA boundaries, the county council is the final decision-maker. The city makes a recommendation. So in 2014, we were asked to provide a preliminary growth forecast to the county. This was the starting point of really our work, looking at what the impacts of a certain population growth forecast would be on the city. At that time, we recommended the mid-range forecast, which is total growth of 28,400 by year 2036. The Planning Commission recommended the high-range forecast, and you can see the numbers, total growth of 35,900. When the city council reviewed that recommendation, you agreed and forwarded that same recommendation on to the county, and the county agreed that that should be the starting number for our review. So that 35,900 is the number that was the starting point based on our recommendation and the county council's actions. Jack?
In the staff report, it says that the 28,398 is an annual growth of 1,235. Is the 1,017-
Yes. The 1,235 number is correct. This number's incorrect.
This is a typo?
Yeah. This is a typo. The Planning Commission wrestled really with these three main questions. What are the most appropriate, what is the most appropriate 2036 growth forecast to use? Can the city and its UGA accommodate that growth forecast, given the boundaries that we have and the vacant land that we have? And if we can't, what should we do about that? Where should the growth occur? You'll hear a lot of testimony tonight. At the Planning Commission level, it seemed to fall into two camps, those advocating for using the lower number and those advocating using the higher number. This is a summary of some of the comments that we heard from those advocating for the lowest possible number. Future growth will be less than the mid-range based on the most recent growth trends. Growth limits would protect the quality of life, and no expansion of our UGA boundary would be required if we select the lowest number. Those advocating for the highest, the high-range number felt that it would be more reflective of future growth rates based on a number of circumstances that you'll hear about tonight. UGA expansion would provide additional areas for a mix of single-family housing types to meet the demand, and it would slow the increase in housing prices. Staff advocated for the mid-range forecast, and for the reasons you see here, that's closest to the rate that we've experienced in the last 24 years. Recent permit activity and vacancy rates lead us to believe that growth is rebounding, that the recession is waning perhaps. Recent permit activity shows us that there are units being built out there. We permitted about 740 new housing units in 2014, and that's the highest number since Also, based on what's going on in Seattle and in Vancouver, they're experiencing tremendous growth, and that may have spin-off effects for us. The mid-range forecast represents the least risk in terms of if we're wrong, and the mid-range forecast also doesn't require any UGA expansion at this time. So here are the numbers. The low, medium, and high-range forecasts, they range from 23,384 at the low end to 35,900 if we talked at the high end. I mean, you can see the average per year, and Jack, I think that's where the 1,017 came from. It was the low range instead of the mid-range. You can see in the bottom table there are the rates that we've actually seen for various time periods over the last 10, 20 or so years. The other part of this discussion has to do with our urban growth area, our urban growth boundary, and we needed to look at what's the growth capacity that we have remaining, both in the existing city limits and in the UGA, and then we looked at areas outside of the city to see if there were areas that were appropriate for expansion. So we started with the city, and it's important to keep those numbers in mind, the 36,000, which is the high-range growth estimate that the Planning Commission is recommending, and the 23,000 new jobs as we go through this. This is a summary of a number of slides, but this represents the growth capacity within the existing city limits. So you'll see the urban villages there in the pink, and the other major areas where we have growth potential within the existing city limits. The total capacity of these areas is 15,000 new housing units are accommodating about 29,400 new residents. So that's the capacity that we've estimated within the existing city limits, and also 19,000 new jobs. Next, we looked at the UGA. Not a lot of developable land left in our UGA in terms of areas for residential development capacity, only for about 1,500 additional housing units in our UGA that would accommodate about 3,500 additional residents. Oops, sorry. So if you remember the total that we're after, which is 35,900, and look at the city limits, the capacity in the city limits, which was 29,400, capacity in the UGA, which is 3,500, that gets us a total of 32,900 total capacity within the city and UGA. That's about 3,000 less than the high-growth forecast that the Planning Commission recommended. So the next exercise was, well, what do we do about that? So the next exercise was, well, what do we do about that? So we looked at areas beyond our UGA, looking for areas that might be appropriate for expansion and eventual urban levels of development. This, again, is a summary slide. It's the last slide in a series of slides that looked at those various areas around the city, and I can probably use the pointer here. So we've got the existing city limits, the existing UGAs are in the light gray color, and we started looking at areas outside of the city. We've got the Lake Wackam watershed over here to the east. We've got the forested hillsides to the south and to the east, and in some cases, this is actually commercial forestry zone property. We've got all along our northern boundary, a series of wetlands, complex wetlands, that don't make those areas particularly attractive for expansion. We've got Ferndale and the Ferndale UGA immediately to our north, and we've got rural areas. These are areas that are zoned for low-density rural development. In many cases, it's parceled out into five- and 10-acre parcels. It's sort of the transition between urban and rural and agriculture that you would like to have. So those aren't, again, particularly attractive for eventual urban development. There's really only a couple of areas that we identified that could be appropriate for expansion, and that's the U Street, the South U Street area, which is this area here, and then the Kitec property immediately north of the existing city limits. The Planning Commission looked at four alternatives, and there are some elements that are common to all four of those alternatives, including maintaining our focus in the current comp plan on urban villages, taking a look at our level of service standards, and infilling where appropriate and where allowed under current zoning, and we may be able to gain some units or some capacity through use of the toolkit, the review of the ADU ordinance, which is in progress, and also review our subdivision ordinance that's in progress. But we don't see a lot of additional capacity coming out of those processes or within the city itself beyond what's allowed now under the current zoning. The first of the alternatives, called Alternative A, this is our adopted plan, so this is our adopted comprehensive plan. It would use the mid-range forecast, keep the current UGA boundary where it is, maintain the U Street area, the South U Street area in a reserve category, and this is our adopted capital facilities plan. So this is essentially our adopted plan. You can see the pros and cons here of that alternative. Continues the urban village strategy, as I said, our planned infrastructure improvements, our capital facilities plan, we plan for these areas. No up zones or expansion of the UGA would be required. Positions us well to respond to uncertainty, as I said, dealing with risk. In terms of the cons, this may not support the goal of reducing growth in rural areas, does not provide additional single-family housing options beyond the current capacity, and it does not have enough capacity for the high-population growth forecast that the Planning Commission is recommending. Alternative B, the main difference between A and B is that under Alternative B, the south half of the Kitec property, which is this property here, would be added to, or the recommendation would be to add it to a reserve category. And a reserve is not part of our UGA. It's simply a signal that if at some point in the future we decide that initial, or additional land is needed, that these would be the first areas that we would look at. So we don't get to count the capacity in these areas. Like I said, it's just a signal that if in the future at some point we decide we need additional land, these are the two first areas that we would look at. Again, the pros of Alternative B, continue the urban village strategy, planned infrastructure improvements, since none of the boundaries are changing, no up zones are required, positioned well to respond to uncertainty, and reserve status projects limited to expansion options. So we preserve those areas, those two areas for expansion in the future if it's deemed necessary. Many of the same cons as Alternative A. Alternative C, and this is where the population growth forecast would change, this would add capacity by adding the south half of the Kitec property actually to the urban growth area. So this area right here would be added to our UGA. It would add to our capacity, and it'd allow us to accommodate a slightly higher population growth forecast, so it would be between the mid and the high-range forecast. U Street, the South U Street area would be maintained in reserve under this alternative. And the infrastructure costs, and we'll talk more about that in a minute, estimated for this area, the public cost, the city cost, 30 to 40 million, to provide the infrastructure that would be needed to support the development in that area. Alternative C, the pros, best opportunity to expand at least cost to the city, best option for adding single-family housing. Again, that's a result of the analysis that we did around the entire city. It does have significant infrastructure costs that would need to be absorbed, and those include costs for the new development and also for pre-existing conditions. Can an affordable mix of housing options be guaranteed just by adding this property to the UGA? And does further expansion of the footprint of the city represent community values? Alternative D, and this wound up being the Planning Commission's recommendation, the major difference here is that in addition to the Kitec property being added to the UGA, the South U Street property would also be added to the UGA. So this allows us to accommodate the high-growth forecast. Like I said, both areas added to the UGA, and the infrastructure costs for both areas are in the range you see here. We did do a financial impact analysis on those two areas, and we used the same methodology that we use when we look at an annexation, and that information is in your packet. I won't try and go through that tonight. You're fairly familiar with it. It looks at the costs associated with providing all of the urban services to those two areas and also the additional tax revenues that we might expect once those areas are annexed to the city. We know that residential development in and of itself doesn't provide the revenues to offset the costs of providing all of the services. New development pays its fair share, but the public is required to pay all of the rest of the costs. And again, this is how the cost-benefit analysis is done. I expect, you know, we'll talk more about that when we get to a work session. Just in summary of the South Kitec area that the Planning Commission recommended adding, it's about 360 acres. We estimate it could support about 800 to 875 new dwelling units, accommodating between 1,800 and 2,000 people. There are nine acres of tourist commercial zoning in there, so that would provide area for some additional jobs. The key infrastructure issues in that area are an east-west connector connecting Slater Road to Meridian Street and areas to the east. We know that downstream sewer conveyance improvements would be required and the King Mountain Water Reservoir. So the summary of the financial impact analysis that we did, capital costs of 32 million, operating costs of between 16 and 28 million. This is over the 20-year period. So the estimated total cost above revenues is 30 to 40 million, and you can see the east-west connector, that facility would be shared by both the city, the county, and by private development. Yes, Jack, question?
Greg, is the connector part of the 30 to 40 million above?
Yes, it is.
It is part of it?
Yes. With respect to U Street, it's about 522 acres. There are, there are existing, there is existing development in there, as you can see. This development was done years ago with city services back in the day when we extended services prior to annexation. So there are 485 existing housing units in this area. So we estimate the capacity if it were annexed at 430 new units and about 1,000 people. There's no commercial or industrial zoning in this area. There are, however, significant infrastructure requirements, including the need for a new fire station to serve this area, improvements to the southern half of U Street, sewer main upgrade, water reservoir and water pump. All of those result in capital costs of 33.2 million, operating costs of between 20 and 40 million, and the total of 46 to 72 million over the 20-year period. Those are costs over revenues. So recommendations, staff recommended or stated a preference for either Alternative A or B. Both of those would allow us to use the mid-range forecast and not have to change any of the UGA boundaries. The Planning Commission recommended Alternative D, continued use of the high-range forecast, as was the recommendation with the preliminary numbers that we did last year, adding the South Kitec and the South U Street properties into the UGA with conditions, and those conditions are listed in the findings. The notable condition, I would say, is that they tried to craft a condition that would require the city and these property owners to come up with a plan to pay for these costs before the areas were annexed. So they didn't just say, we think this is appropriate without addressing the costs. They did write a condition that they thought addressed that. And that is the end of the staff presentation.
Thank you, Greg. Before we open up publicly, any quick questions? Make it quick, because I watched the Planning Commission, they went on for 45 minutes, and I don't want to see that.
The last thing you mentioned, Greg, was the Planning Commission proposed a conditions to annexation. Can I get an opinion on whether or not such conditions are legal or practical?
I'll take that one.
Alan Mariner, Deputy City Attorney. You could have conditions to annexation, so there would be some kind of development agreement that goes with the annexation that provides for certain thing, performance standards that they have to meet for the annexation to go forward and some way of ensuring that that actually occurs.
In this case, cost-sharing arrangements. That would be?
It could be, yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Greg. We have anybody else? We have about 30 names on the list. I know more people have come up, so we're going to start now, and remember, three minutes, and then we're going to go to the next person. We're going to, council's going to take a break about nine o'clock to see if we can still sit here any longer, so. Let's go ahead and start, first three names, Mary Ann Rangel, Linda Twitchell, and John Lesal.
Yes? Yes, okay. My name is Mary Ann Rangel. I'm a resident of Bellingham. I'm here to ask you, please, in your deliberations of the Planning Commission's proposals for the 20-year population forecast and the urban boundaries, that you consider all of the many comments made by very knowledgeable people to the Planning Commission about realistic population projections, as in the excellent report given by Dr. John McGlaughlin from Western Washington University, that you also consider all of the comments submitted about the environmental impacts, again, made by very knowledgeable people. Tonight, you heard her again as one of them, Wendy Harris, also about our land and water capacity, our supply and its quality, both Lake Wackam and Patton, and also that you consider the comments made about the true cost of the growth to taxpayers. Please consider all these submitted comments. Not all of them are necessarily in your packets tonight. All the comments made to the Planning Commission, they all point to a low forecast for population. I believe that a planning commission should be made up of members from various walks of life with perspectives of all kinds. The members of our present Planning Commission, I don't think has that broad view, is more a view of development, et cetera. I believe also that many of the letters and the comments at both meetings and sent into the Planning Commission have not been paid attention to, they've been ignored, and I would hope that you, the City Council, would put more attention towards these. I think this input provided by our community is very important, the input provided by the real stakeholders of Bellingham, that is, the community members. Our voices need to be heard, and I think they should be heeded as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda Twitchell, John Lesal, and Ann Mackey.
Hi, Linda Twitchell, representing the Building Industry Association, Wackam County. We wrote you a long letter. I'll try not to repeat, but let me please point out some things that the staff has not included in their analysis to you. For instance, what are now being called, I believe, pre-existing conditions and previously have been called existing deficiencies. This is the 76 to 113 million dollars, for instance, they're suggesting it would cost the city to include the South U Street area. These are pre-existing conditions that affect other parts of the city now. We are not talking about something that would be kicked into gear by new development. Brian Henshaw, your finance director, testified in May to the Planning Commission that these are costs that the city is already on the line for, that this is not something that we're making up by bringing in development, that this is existing deficiencies the city has somehow got to deal with. Okay. Another interesting point, the issue of TDRs, which was not discussed at all by the Planning Commission, but did appear in your resolution. If you require folks to buy TDRs in the Lake Wackam watershed, my question would be, before you could annex these areas, we're looking at in Alternative D, my question would be, what's the nexus? What's the connection? Law requires that when you tell a developer they have to pay or buy something, you have to be able to prove nexus, which is a connection, and you have to have rough proportionality. In other words, they're paying for something that's roughly proportionate to the impact they're causing. Please keep this stuff in mind. This was the legal question, I'm guessing Michael was asking about, but this is certainly of importance to our facility, to our group. The basic question before you tonight is whether Bellingham wants to remain the urban center in Wackam County. That's what it pretty much boils down to. How is the city going to accommodate growth that's likely to occur? What opportunities can you create to keep growth in the city if you want it to remain the urban center? If we don't, okay, you can make that decision, and growth can go to Linden, Ferndale, or elsewhere in the county, which is typically termed sprawl, but this is a basic conversation that I suggest needs to take place, is do you want higher density, which is what it's going to take in Bellingham? Do you want to provide opportunities for the type of housing people want and are willing to pay for, which nationwide is single-family homes, not multi? We do have multi-family housing being built in Bellingham, but we also have a lot of people going to Ferndale, Linden, Mount Vernon, et cetera. Linden and Ferndale are both growing faster than Bellingham and have been for some time. I'm up. Okay, thank you, Matt.
Thank you very much. John Lesal, Ann Mackey, and Mary Kay Robinson.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the council. John Lesal, Point Roberts. I served on the Wackam County Planning Commission from 2004 to 2012, and prior to, during, and after that time, I advocated for a low population forecast when the subject was presented, which was often. Government mandated population forecasts the driving force behind long-range land use planning. Unfortunately, they can overshoot a resource planning, particularly for water. In my previous submissions to you, I offered Skagit County's process for choosing a population forecast that was a much more straightforward and accurate method of determining your forecast. In 2004, after consultation with their towns and cities, Skagit chose their projection by taking the sum of the OFM medium and low projections dividing by two. Ten years later, their actual population increase was nearly identical to the original 2004 forecast. The process of choosing this figure was fast and accurate. In contrast, over the past decade, Wackam County's process has been excruciating, with large sums of taxpayer money spent on private consultants and endless hours The process of choosing this figure was fast and accurate. In contrast, over the past decade, Wackam County's process has been excruciating, with large sums of taxpayer money spent on private consultants and endless hours of staff and commission time to produce, in the present case, I think, an unrealistically high number. In 2008, who could have predicted that our yearly population growth percentage of one and a half to two percent would drop below one percent as a result of the housing collapse and subsequent recession? Did any of you foresee this happening? I predicted in an op-ed back in February of 2007 that those double-digit increases in home values and high immigration rates would end soon, and they did. At last week's City Club forum, the planners in Bellingham, Ferndale, and Linden spoke of the seventy-six thousand new neighbors that are expected to move to Bellingham and Wackam County in the next twenty years. But this is neither provable nor, as many would suggest, desirable. Last May, the governments of Vancouver, B.C., and the Lower Mainland conducted a plebiscite on increasing the provincial sales tax by one-half percent to fund infrastructure projects to accommodate an estimated one million people expected to move to the region in twenty years. This was, in fact, a plebiscite on growth. The results are now in and the measure failed. With over two-hundred-and-ten-thousand votes cast, voters solidly rejected the tax in most municipalities by a sixty percent margin. Vancouver already has the worst traffic congestion in Canada. The addition of another one million people would make matters worse, and spending an estimated seven-point-five billion dollars on transit and infrastructure will not solve the problem. I suggest you ask your constituents a similar question. Do you support adding seventy-six thousand people to our county population over the next twenty years, and are you willing to support that growth with new taxes? I am confident that a majority of Bellingham voters would support your low-population-growth number, and I suggest that you, as elected officials, have a duty to ask the question formally before adopting anything other than your low-population forecast.
Thank you, John. Ann Mackey, Mary Kay Robinson, and Eric Scott.
Ann Mackey, I live in Bellingham, and I've experienced my summer reading program, which I foisted upon myself and have tried to pay attention to all the documents that have come up on this discussion. It's not a topic that I've been involved in in years past, and so I've spent many hours reading, like I'm sure you have and you will do. I urge you to support the selection of a low-population number for Bellingham because I think it best supports what our community desires for its livability standards and what our sustainable capacity is. I have to ask a question. How does a job explosion in Seattle and a housing growth in Seattle automatically impact how Bellingham is going to grow and how Bellingham is going to succeed in managing growth? I don't think people are automatically going to move to Bellingham. I'm sure there will be Realtors tonight who will say that there's, you know, just rapid home purchasing here in Bellingham by people that are willing to commute up and down I-5. I've done that before myself, and that's not an easy lifestyle if you're trying to raise a family. None of the topics of the focus on community character, housing affordability, employment opportunities, and environmental protections were focused on and discussed by the Planning Commission in its meetings on this. I attended a lot of those meetings and observed hours of discussions on the pros and cons of the two UGAs and new housing projects currently outside the city limits. There was little, if any, discussion about population analysis. My observation after attending these meetings is that our current Planning Commission has a very narrow focus of interest on development and the construction and real estate industry. Numerous letters and comments from myself and many, many other citizens seem to get no attention and no answer, and really wasn't important at that Planning Commission. I would like to see a Planning Commission that functions more as a community advisory committee and has a genuine perspective that represents a variety of stakeholders in our interests in the issue of Bellingham's growth and how we want to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Mary Kay Robinson, Eric Scott, and Richard and Shirley Wigan.
Good evening, Mary Kay Robinson. Yes, I am a Realtor, and I help people buy homes and afford homes and create families. And I live in Bellingham. I love our individual neighborhoods, and we love the character of that neighborhood, and we love the vitality of those neighborhoods, but the dream of accommodating more people in those neighborhoods with the infill toolkit one building has been built is a dream. We need to accept that Planning Commission's well-thought-out decision as to how we comply with the Growth Management Act. As much as we would like to have the majority of the population growth choose high-rise condos and apartments in urban villages, it just isn't going to happen. Statistics show that seventy percent of buyers want a yard, and they want space. I had a young couple just recently with a young child and pets. They just sold their two-bedroom home in a character neighborhood in Bellingham and moved outside of Bellingham to get the kind of home and space that they wanted for their growing family and that they could afford. This was never, and I mean never, a thought as far as a condo for this family, never comes up. High-rise projects in urban villages will get us to the growth numbers on paper, but that's not the reality. And there's been even the director seplers that has acknowledged this. Housing prices are continuing to escalate in Bellingham. Talk to any agent, and you'll hear stories of multiple offers on homes. The laws of supply and demand do apply to housing. If we're not keeping up with the demand of an increase in population for housing, prices will rise. They are rising. Long-term, we will become a city of the independently wealthy and retirees who are fortunate enough to get here first. Then we lose exactly the character of those neighborhoods that we love. It's not about the housing structure in those neighborhoods, it's about the people in those homes. It's the diversity of their backgrounds, their jobs, their interests, their income levels that give our community a spirit and energy and vitality that is simply not present when it all becomes a wealthy enclave. That's not the community that I love, and that's not, I believe, who we are. We can't have our cake and eat it too. We can't expect to be the employment center for the county and then expect the other communities to provide all the affordable housing for the employees. It's not a sustainable business plan to take all the tax revenue from the businesses and then only put it in to pretty parks and bike lanes and ignore the housing piece. Businesses will figure it out, and eventually they'll just choose to locate elsewhere. Then we're left with a downward spiral of decreasing tax revenues and increasing maintenance costs and what's left behind. I want my children to have the option to live here. I want them to be able to afford it. To achieve that, we need that more housing, which is in the expanded UGA, and to keep prices from running away like they are in Seattle. To shut the doors on any increase in the stock of single-family housing is, in a world selfish and quite frankly cheap. The "I got mine, too bad for you" attitude is not who we are. We are a generous community.
Time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Eric Scott, Richard and Shirley Wigan, and Roger Almscar.
Hello, Eric Scott, Berchwood neighborhood. As I understood, most people on the Planning Commission were directly involved in profiting from population growth and development and real estate. So asking them to choose between a low, medium, or high forecast was like asking them to choose between a low, medium, high profit, personal profit. And that growth was not even, does not even reflect the actual or historic. It is not surprising they chose the high profit for themselves. So we will be building based on past growth, which is like driving, looking in the mirror, rearview mirror. So one commissioner used the justification for choosing the high-growth rate was that when you plan for a party, you usually plan big. And that made me wonder what kind of mentality we have making recommendations on major quality of life issues for a city. It sounded, to me, it sounded like the reasoning of a child asking for a pony for her birthday. Supposed to turn that off. Keep going, sir, you're going to run out of time. Developers are planning their party at the people's expense. They do not even want to pay for the cost. We pay for their party, and they party. Another justification for infinite population growth is that we cannot close the door behind us, that would be unfair. We're not closing the door behind us, we're saying that as a community, we've reached our population capacity, that we are not obligated to provide housing for an infinite number of people from around the country and around the world. We do not want to lose more of our natural areas and farmlands and forests to urban sprawl called UGAs. We do not want to have our homes ruined by infill, and, which is packing in high-density housing to the neighborhoods that we're seen as politically weak. No doors are closed. If someone wants to move here, they can choose from one of the available homes or rentals. If none are available to their liking, then they'll have to wait, as we all do. I've never considered myself so special that I could put my finger on a map anywhere in the world and say that I am going to live there, no matter what, and that the people currently living there will make room for me. They will build housing for me and all the people I want to bring. I am not entitled to that, nor is anybody else outside of our community. And if I could not live in that place, then they are entitled, or they are obligated to raise their taxes to subsidize me. So I am not that special to live anywhere, and nor is anybody else outside of our community so special to live here at our cost. Another justification is that we will grow smart. Well, Seattle's been growing smart.
Time's up, thank you, sir. The next is Richard and Shirley Wigan, Roger Almscar, and Adrian Letter.
Good evening, council members. Roger Almscar, I live in Bellingham. I'm a former county planner, and now I'm a land-use consultant, so I've drafted rules, I've administered rules over the calendar and so on, and I've lived and worked under them for quite a few years. I support the points in the July twentieth Building Industry Association letter. I think that's a very well-written letter. It covers, there's many elements in this issue, as you're hearing tonight, and one element that I think people haven't talked about is that the Growth Management Act has thirteen goals in it, and local governments are supposed to work really hard to try to find a balance among all those goals. That includes things like affordable housing, economic development, permit process, and property rights. And I've seen some local governments and hearings boards, the Growth Management Hearing Board, ignore those other goals when they feel like it. So I was actually a little surprised when the Planning Commission voted seven to zero to support alternative D. I testified in favor of it. I delivered a letter to your office last Friday that I gave to them. So I think their action was reasonable and constructive regarding such subjects as housing, environment, and jobs. And Linda Twitchell did a good job of commenting on the TDR condition in the draft resolution. I think it's really questionable legally whether you can make a project that might occur on the Kitec site or South U Street, condition that to try to deal with some issue in the Lake Wackam watershed. I think that's a real stretch, and I urge you to look at that very carefully. I think the big issue is that there is a shortage of buildable land and buildable lots in the greater Bellingham area for mid-range and slightly lower-cost range housing. The land capacity analysis says there's four thousand-some lots in Bellingham. Only ninety are on the market. I urge you to see page one of the BIA letter, it documents that. So there's the question, why is that? And I suspect a lot of those lots cannot be, don't have much market value because they have too many wetlands and buffers on them, and some other owners don't want to sell, period. You know, part of this, one of the reasons, I think the main reason that housing costs are high in Wackam County in general, and they're about the same as Snohomish County, if you look at my letter of last month, I have a graph in there by other people that documents that, yet their income in Snohomish County on the average is about fourteen percent more than Wackam County. So there's a problem.
Thank you, Roger.
Thank you.
The next name is Adrian Letter, Joanne Rowe, and Donna McComber. Adrian doesn't want to speak? Okay, Joanne Rowe.
I'm doing. I think that petition's here before.
Okay. Okay, thank, thank you very much. Donna, go ahead. No, ma'am, if you, ma'am, if you're going to speak, you're going to have to come down to the microphone. No. Go ahead, Donna.
Thank you. Good evening. Donna McComber, one-five-nine Larson Road. I sent a map and a petition to you folks, signed by all of our neighbors a few weeks ago, and I handed in the petition and a new and improved map tonight, and I called it the North, the West Larson Road Neighborhood Plan. None of us were aware that the Planning Commission was adding our neighborhood to the northern UGA. I happened to contact Greg on the day before the last hearing and found out that our neighborhood was being dragged into Kitec's plan. And when I spoke at the hearing that night, not one commissioner heard what I said or commented on the petition that I handed them. They did not listen. So we're getting in early with the council members. I'm tired. I'm tired of attending meetings for over twenty years to preserve our small rural neighborhood. I'm tired of seeing the same people get up and speak because they will gain financially from growth. I'm tired of hearing how much this area is needed for growth. We are a community of four neighbors that have lived on our dead-end road for almost fifty years. We have raised our kids here, and we have grown old here. I am tired, but I will continue to fight for the preservation of our neighborhood. We do not want to be part of the Kitec development complex. We do not want to be added to the city. We want to make it easy for you to just leave out our properties that I've marked on the map in green, that I submitted to you. This does not make the UGA map inconsistent with the Growth Management Act. If Kitec can add their little comma of property, you can certainly delete our little rectangle. Personally, I think that adding this whole area to the UGA at this time is unnecessary. From reading all the posts on Engage Bellingham, the majority of Bellingham citizens feel the same way I do. I also think using a bloated population forecast to satisfy this large UGA is not smart planning. You have a staff that knows what they are doing. Please consider their recommendations. And all that we are asking is that you please leave the West Larson Road neighborhood out of the urban growth plan. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Donna. Joanne, Mrs. Rowe, come on, you were before her, but go ahead.
Sorry.
That's all right.
I thought I was supposed to, okay. What I ask of you is that you think of the people who are located between Kelly Road and Smith Road, and I know that there are plans to include some of this property in the growth management, and it makes so much sense. There are probably twelve people that are isolated, for instance, on adjoining Kitec, if that is a part of the plan, and we are completely, we can't do anything with our properties that face Meridian, never mind the rest of it, but what about Meridian? They widened it to five lanes, and I have people here from Meridian, the Wiggins, for instance, and other people who are my immediate neighbors who have had potential buyers, and they can't sell their property because there are so many restrictions. Things like residential five acres in that property doesn't make any sense at all, and it needs to be looked at, and what your plan right now seems fairly fair.
Thank you. Warren Levine, Christopher Granis, and Keith Howard.
I'm Warren Levine, I've lived in Bellingham for fifteen years. I'm a medical marijuana patient. I'm very concerned with what the state is trying to do to medical marijuana patients.
Sir, sir, this is a public hearing about land use. We're going to go back to that, you signed up on the wrong list. We're going to go back to the open comment after we get done with talking about the UGA and the population growth thing. So I'll call on you when we get done with that.
Sorry about that.
That's all right. It's confusing sometimes. Christopher Granis, Keith Howard, and Jack Petrie.
I'm Christopher Granis. Chucking on a drive. Please adopt the low-growth forecast. The South U Street area was placed in reserve classification by the county in 2009 largely because of concerns regarding the impacts of additional urban development on water quality in Lake Patton. If you are considering a growth forecast that would add the South U Street area to the UGA, does that mean you are no longer concerned about the water quality in Lake Patton? The Puget Sound is in trouble, and sprawl is a major reason. The environment is the most important reason to oppose... most important reason to oppose sprawl. There are financial reasons to adopt a low-growth forecast. According to the Planning Director, the cost to the city, including South U Street in a UGA, is $47 to $72 million. That's a wide range, but since estimates of this sort are more often over than under, I will use the $72 million and divide that by the 1,000 estimated new housing units. Here, I made a mistake. I learned from Greg's presentation that that's the number of new people. The housing units is considerably lower, so I came up with $72,000 per unit the city would subsidize, and it's going to be a lot more than that since the number of units is a lot less. The subsidy for Kitec, if it were to be given the status of a UGA, is less, at $45,000 per unit, but still a sizable cost to Bellingham taxpayers. Real estate people tell me these will be $300,000 plus or minus units, which will be affordable to families with incomes of $100,000 and above. The Planning Director also says the cost to the city of UGA development is two and a half times as much per unit as infill development. Providing affordable housing is another reason to adopt the low forecast. Bellingham citizens have voted to tax themselves to subsidize low-income housing, but I doubt if they had a chance, they would vote to subsidize housing for families making $100,000. Do you think they would vote again to subsidize affordable housing if you commit them to spending the estimated $117 million of tax dollars on Kitec and South U Street? Think of how much affordable housing you could create if you were to spend that much on low-income housing infill. The growth forecasts provided by Burke have been shown to be bogus. The total number of people who moved to Bellingham in 2014 is less than half of the consultant's low-growth forecast.
Thank you, Christopher.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Keith Howard, Jack Petrie, and Wendy Harris.
I'm just here to speak in support of the Kitec proposal. One of the consequences of the expansion of the urban growth area and the Kitec area is that the pump station would have to be installed to service that area, and it would be borne by the developer. And what that would do, it would provide sewer services in the area, in the Horton to Kelly Road annexation area, as well as the city property that's already in the city limits on the west side of the guide. And that would, I'm sure that would provide a lot of revenue, which isn't considered in your financial statements here on this, because there's 230 acres in there, and all the infrastructure is pretty much in. And I've got property in that area, and so we've been going through the annexation process for about eight or 10 years. And the fire's written off on it, police and everybody's written off on it, except we have put in this pump station, and there's no large property owners in that area that can finance the thing. And we can't seem to talk the city into doing a public finance of it and do an LID. But anyway, if that, if that pump station was put in, that property would produce a lot of revenue, and I think, I'm sure all of that property is in your inventory for available light industrial property, and it really shouldn't be considered in there if we're not going to be able to develop it, because it's real hard to develop it without services. I just think it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a good place to develop anyway, because there's only one, one major property holder in there that you're dealing with, and there's no existing development in any area. So, the city could steer the type of development that goes in there and get, you know, a real, well-planned-out addition to the city in that area.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Jack Petrie, Wendy Harris.
Kind of humorous, the Mr. Councilmember Liloquist that I wrote down should just be Councilmember Liloquist. Okay, I submitted some testimony last Friday, and many of you looked it over, and I'd like to thank the council member for providing both comment on my testimony and an additional study, which I hadn't seen. The study, as Mr. Liloquist points out, confirms in every respect the comments I emailed Friday regarding the fiscal comments, costs of development. It's always nice to receive unexpected confirmation of the accuracy of what I've done. I've looked at like 300 studies over the years. Likewise, I agree with the council member that it never ceases to amaze me that people can look at the same thing and see a different picture. The study the council member provided is by a well-known advocacy group called Smart Growth America. It's a well-known, what most people would call a liberal group, but it does good work in general. As the council member pointed out, based on their study, all three of the developments provided varying levels of profit to the city of Nashville when they did the study, and that's consistent with hundreds of other studies around the country. I would emphasize one thing to all of you. The proposed restoration of South U Street to active rather than reserve U Street status is infill development. South U Street's already more densely developed than many areas of Bellingham is. It's got a school that was built on Bellingham's projections that there would be population there, has several dozens of acres of city-owned parkland, as I said, the school, and exists, existing complex of sewer and water lines and other urban infrastructure. It's infill by any measure. But the important point that I was trying to make is that the Growth Management, in the Growth Management Act world, cities have some specific obligations beyond trying to make money. It's not a money-making proposition. They have obligations, as some have characterized as triple bottom line. Cities are expected to protect the environment, enhance quality of life, provide for a vibrant economy, and achieve social justice goals by encouraging growth in the UGAs. If all this can be achieved without cost to the city, that's all that much better. Bellingham's 2002 to 2022 plan, adopted in 2006, has failed utterly in providing for the encouragement of growth necessary to achieve those triple bottom-line goals. The demonstrable result of that 2006 plan has been degradation of the environment, social dislocation, and a sluggish economy. We can do better than that, and as a first small step, I urge you as a council to adopt the unanimous recommendation of your Planning Commission.
Thank you, Jack.
Thank you. Hit the period the same time you said thank.
You are, you've been doing this for a while. You should be.
Wendy Harris, this planning process has affected me on a very personal level. I'm really having problems emotionally dealing with this sense of denial and disconnection between what I see happening in the world, what I'm reading about, and what we're discussing about as we plan for our future. Every day, I read a new science study that indicates the latest species that should be added to the Endangered Species Act list is the human species. For the first time in our existence, the survival of our species is no longer assured. The primary reason for this is development and growth. And it's not just climate change that's threatening our survival. It's primarily the loss of biodiversity and the ecosystem services that they provide. What we really need, if we're going to survive, is resilience. And yet, here we are discussing future growth and land use without any mention or reference to global collapse. I, I mean, what we do here matters. Choices we make now matter, and we can't continue to plan under this bubble of denial. I'm reading stories where now scientists are discussing whether it's appropriate for them to openly cry. I want to openly cry. There's, there's books being written about how to deal with the emotions of global collapse and, and living in a time of global collapse. Why isn't any of this being brought into our planning process? And, you know, adding to this, and, you know, I just want to say what one scientist said, which I think is very appropriate. He said, "We're not alarmists, but the information is alarming. We need to be considering that." And adding to that is we're bringing in this discussion of, of growth and UGA brownies prematurely. This is a discussion that we should be having after we review other information, specifically the critical area ordinance. And because biodiversity and habitat connectivity are primary means for us to build resiliency, it makes no sense that we're discussing the critical area ordinance next month instead of now. So, I went to the UGA, the GMA, and I looked up the WAC, and what it said was, "Fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas contribute to the state's biodiversity and occur on both publicly and privately owned land. Designating these areas is an important part of land use planning for appropriate development densities, urban growth boundaries, open space corridors, and incentive-based conservation and stewardess, stewardship programs." And if you look at some of the recommendations for how you go about planning for efficient wildlife conservation, they talk about creating-
Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Chandra Shonher, is that correct? Okay, Mimi Ostradall, Cal Leinstra, and Darcy Jones.
Sorry for the delay. You're not counting?
Not yet.
Okay. I'm trying to get all that on the screen. And I want you to kind of know what it is. So, I'll, I guess I'll move it around a little bit for you. Sorry.
Go ahead, Mimi.
Thank you. All right. I'm Mimi Ostradall. I live in Cornwall Park Neighborhood. I'm also a Realtor. And, you know, I really love Bellingham because of the passion that everybody has on both sides of this issue. It's one of the things that makes us great. But I'm here really to talk about affordable housing and tell you a little story and share with you some stats, because we're all questioning how things are going in Bellingham. So, this little picture is from Saturday, July 25, the listed depending ratios in Bellingham, Washington. And you can see the, to read it, it says active and contingent on the left, pended or subject to inspection is what STI means, the total listed and pending, you can see, and then by price category on the side, and then the last is what percentage of our inventory currently is pending. Now, I'm going to tell you a little story about an open house I had this weekend. Since you're all wondering who's coming here, I'll give you some feet-on-the-ground information. Little house on Peabody, two-bedroom, one-bath, very simple little bungalow, not real special, not updated kitchen, and I had four offers in 24 hours. All of them were over, all of them were over asking price. Our poor little FHA buyer, who had a better-than-asking-price offer, which was awesome, had no chance against the other people who came in to compete, who were willing to pay tens of thousands of dollars more than our FHA first-time homebuyer, 3% down buyer. That is not the Bellingham that I love. Five of the groups that came through were from Seattle, retirees looking to downsize and simplify their lives. The rest of the 20-plus that showed up were little families, people getting married, a lot of people from out of area. It's what's happening right now. I can't express it more. It's actually one of the more healthy, robust environments I've seen in my almost 20 years selling real estate in Whatcom County, because it's real people who want to really live in real houses. That's cool stuff. But if we can't have a broad-based home-buying choice for people that isn't just in condos, none of these people could I have ever flipped into a condo. Oh, yeah, you want affordable housing in Bellingham? Well, guess what? I've got a sweet little two-bedroom condo downtown. I'm sorry, people with dogs don't want that. The NAR research is really true from what I experienced as a Realtor. The majority of the people want a little elbow room, just like the majority of us want a little elbow room, the things we're passionate about. People that, coming up here, my neighbors, friends, community members are talking about. That's cool. That's what we're about.
Thank you, Mimi. Cal Leinstra, Darcy Jones, and John McLaughlin. Then anybody else that hasn't signed up, you can line up.
Good evening, council. Cal Leinstra, Bellingham. I'm a real estate broker for 47 years and partner in about 87 acres located next to Wade King School over in South U Street. I'd like to speak just briefly about three subjects: population, land supply, and demand. I support the high projection on population, as I think it'll be the most accurate, it'll most closely track actual growth, and that's been shown with the OFM high projection in 1995, came very close to the actual growth of today that actually occurred. On land supply, given some new rules on critical areas, the existing billable land supply may be overstated by as much as 200%. In fact, single-family land supply is so short in Bellingham that home builders are building single-family homes and lots that are zoned for multifamily. That's just mostly unheard of anywhere else. And speaking of multifamily, I think it's been talked about a couple of times. The ratio of 75% multifamily and 25% single-family proposed by Planning and others is just not in sync with the real market, which demands at least 75% family, single-family detached housing. And we've had a few charts that showed that upwards of 85%. Continuing on the subject of demand, we're coming out of a long recession now. Unemployment is diminishing. Interest rates are low. This all portrays a strong demand for single-family housing. The millennials are coming, and now the, and now comprise the largest segment of home buyers. Sales are up in almost every price range, and it's been 10 years since builders have been this bullish on sales. A MacArthur Foundation survey this year found that people, one, that people want and expect solutions to the housing crisis to be a higher priority for both national and local leaders alike. Two, that Americans place a high priority on homeownership, that's single-family detached. Three, 60% of Americans say housing affordability is a serious or fairly serious problem. We're not talking subsidized housing. And four, Americans want their leaders to make housing affordability a priority. There's no magic bullet, and it will take a lot of time, but there can be no denying that there is a direct link between a usable land supply and price. With the exception of paragraph 4C regarding TDRs, I therefore strongly urge you to adopt the Planning Commission's seven-to-zero recommendation regarding the UGAs. Thanks for listening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Cal, Darcy Jones, and John McLaughlin. Then we'll go with anybody who hasn't signed up. Why don't we just leave that up, Greg, so we don't have to keep going back and forth?
Well, okay. That helps. Oh, thank you. Hi, I'm Darcy Jones, Jones Engineers, 4164 Meridian Street in Bellingham. I'm here representing Kitec USA in regard to their property known as South Kitec in the, in these discussions. We agree with the Planning Commission's recommendations for Alternative D. The South Kitec property can provide needed housing in employment lands and, and provide them at reasonably affordable prices. We believe the multi-jurisdictional resolution for population allocation adopted by the city is a statement that the city intends to be proactive to ensure that Bellingham retains its status as the economic and cultural center of Whatcom County by achieving the critical mass necessary for vibrant downtown. by achieving the critical mass necessary for vibrant downtown. We believe it's better to plan ahead to accommodate growth rather than try to react to market changes. This type of legislation takes too long to be reactive to economic and market changes, and we believe it's better to absolutely plan ahead. We've reviewed the land capacity analysis prepared in support of this study. We gave some written testimony to that. We believe you're probably more than 3,000 units short. And the ratio of single-family to multifamily, where that brought into line more realistically, you'd be even more short. So I've written testimony to that. We believe the existing UGA is not necessarily efficient as it is, and it should be reconfigured to some extent and to be more efficient. I don't even use the word expanded. We don't think it necessarily has to be expanded, per se, just more efficient in terms of usable land. Existing infrastructure deficiencies can be solved in the area. You've heard some testimony tonight. There are existing deficiencies now affecting people in the Klein Kelly, the red, 169 acres. They can't get access to the sewer. There's a sewer liner, the guide, but they can't get access to it. The properties in blue, they're in the city. They're actually in the city right now. They don't have sewer. That's another 70 acres or so. I've heard maybe 230 acres or so of land. If Kitec were to come in, we'd be building a pump station. We'd have to pump the sewer from about here, or about, actually, at Tremont and head south. So we could bring a lot of property in with us, light industrial zone property, commercial uses that currently, right now, don't have public sewer. So the revenues that come from that, we've looked at. We've had the Western Washington University Economic Center look at that, and it significantly changes the picture with regard to fiscal impacts.
Thank you, Darcy.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. John McLaughlin? And then anybody else that should speak?
First, I want to thank you for your attention to a matter that's so important to the future of our home. You've heard many reasoned and impassioned comments regarding population projections and UGA boundaries. I want to speak to you on a matter about UGAs that perhaps you haven't heard of yet, but it's extraordinarily important and even urgent. You may not have heard, but there's an asteroid on a collision course with Bellingham. You can save our city if you invest now in an asteroid deflector. That will happen to cost about $100 million. It'll raise the property tax on the average household some $2,000 to $3,000 over the next 20 years, but we'll be grateful for your prudent planning. The deflector will destroy valuable wetlands and will drive wild salmon to extinction in some of the city's streams, but that's a small price to pay to save the city. Never mind that the astrophysical models regarding asteroids show there's a vanishingly small probability of any impact here. But the lobbyists for the asteroid deflector assure us that impact is really likely. And you really can't trust astrophysicists anyway. They're balding geeks that are obsessed with numbers.
Let's not get too personal.
Okay, sorry.
I'm bald, by the way.
I'm chasing you. The scenario may seem fanciful, but if you think about it, there are some very close parallels with the Comprehensive Plan Update, Population Projections, and UGA decisions. The population projections, as you can see in the analysis that I sent to all of you, and would be happy to explain, is based on invalid analysis by apparently incompetent consultants. In statistical jargon, those results are biased. In the common parlance, it's lying with statistics. Because they're connected with such large financial decisions, we really should call those results and recommendations fraudulent. You should not base decisions on lies or fraud and not by consultants that are not capable of calculating an average correctly. The most likely projection, again, please refer to my analysis, which is based on, not opinion, but on cold, objective analysis. The most likely projection is 19,920 over the years from 2014 to 2036, same period you're looking at. That's less than 90%. It's 90% less than the projection you've been recommended. I'm sorry. The projection you've been recommended is 90% greater than that. That's an average of 823 per year, rather than over 1,500 per year.
Thank you very much, John.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next people come up and spell your name for us, because you're not on the list. We need to have the correct name.
Hi, my name is Pat Hammel, H-A-M-M-E-L-L. I live in Bellingham. The property that I'm particularly interested in is the West Larson Road on the very northern edge of the projected UGA. I did send a letter, and I thank you all so much, and I appreciate all your work on it. I, too, wish that we would go by the lower numbers that were developed by the planning staff. And if not, I would ask that our little community on the West Larson Road be excluded from the UGA. We're four homes on a dead end, one road, one-lane road. We've been there 50 years. Across the back of ours, which that would be the southern part of our property, all four of those is wetland, no doubt about it, wetland that covers more than half of our properties. We have judiciously taken care of that wetland that is home for many species of birds and small animals. And I just can't, we did not, we were not informed that we were being, as somebody said, drug in with Kitec. And I was just like, we're wetland, how can that be? On the corner of the West Larson Road, I don't know if any of you have driven out there, but a few years ago, there was a project that took the whole summer, and sometimes they ran the crew 24-hour shifts to build, let's see what it is. It's the Salmon Habitat Restoration Silver Creek Watershed there on the corner of the Larson Road. And was that, that was just completed just not too long ago? And is that all just for not? Because if we were to run so much traffic down to change the road, what would that do to all of that? And what would that do to the wetlands on our properties? We're asking that we be excluded. The Kitec, I can remember back in 1991 when the Kitec property, when they bought the beautiful, beautiful Wilder Farm. And we attended meetings. And when we were talking about the cost, at then, I can remember them saying, "We will take care of the cost. We will build a school. We will do all this." So maybe if it does come in, maybe you can go back to those statements in 1991. But I appreciate all your planning. But my main request is that you exclude the West Larson Road, because it is a wetland from the UGA. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Pat. Dan McShane, Clayton Petrie, and anybody else that wants to speak to us on this issue?
A little bit of it. Dan McShane, 1451 Grant Street. That's M-C-S-H-A-N-E. Roughly 2005, I was adhering in the city council chambers. I can't remember if it was the city council or the Planning Commission. Same issue, identical, UGA boundaries, population projections. So it's a little bit of a deja vu, I guess. But one person got up and talked about Lake Patton and concerns about water quality in Lake Patton. And I'd never really looked at the size of the watershed. It is a really small watershed that feeds that lake. I would hope that the city council is familiar with the impacts of urban development in lake watersheds and the impacts of water quality. And what you can see in this image is the area that would be fed into the lake. And you can, again, look at the environmental impact statement, which is in its draft form currently, that Waukesha County is putting out, and says, "Two mechanisms have significant influence on natural surface water systems. Forest removal and creation of impervious surfaces will unavoidably accompany the increased development that would occur under all alternatives." And they reference Derek Booth from King County, published work that he did, many papers that have been written about impervious surface and forest cover removal and water quality impacts. And lakes are particularly sensitive to this issue. And it closes, this is the draft environmental impact statement that will go with this decision that you're making. Engineered surface water treatment and/or detention systems intended to offset impacts of increased impervious surface area and vegetation removal may not be effective in replicating pre-existing conditions. And it goes on to say, "These mechanisms have limited capacity, so avoidance is the most effective strategy." So I don't have any strong opinions over many of the things that you've heard about tonight. This is one area where I think it would be a terrible mistake, and you're looking at many more expenses in recovering this lake if you make the same mistakes that generations before made in urbanizing the Lake Waukesha watershed. By the way, Lake Patton Creek is listed for dissolved oxygen problems, so it's the exit that leads to the lake. I'll just slide this up as, you can see, the golf course probably has some impact already, but you can see it's a really small area, and this is an absolute gem of a resource for Waukesha County and for the city of Bellingham. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much, Dan. Clayton, Petrie, is there anybody else that wants to come and speak? Now's the time to line up.
Hello, my name's Clayton Petrie. I live in Bellingham. I'm speaking in favor of the 7-0 recommendation for alternative D, reactivation of the U Street Reserve, excluding the unannexable portion of the dewy wetlands and not including Larson Road. So this is what you, the council, the county commission, and the county council voted yes to. Most were skeptical that Bellingham is actually willing to do the work. I hope that's not true. I'm going to read you some of it. "Bellingham's proposal is consistent with past trends. The city averaged annual growth of 15, 27 people per year over the last 20 years. The Burke High allocation is closest, 15, 62, to the past growth rate. We are not, oh, Bellingham will continue to be a desirable place to live. We believe that it is more responsible to plan for a higher growth rate than to plan for a drop in the rate of growth that might not occur. The city administration and council believe that cities are the appropriate location for the majority of population growth. Accordingly, Bellingham is willing to plan for a higher percentage of total countywide growth, and we are willing to do our part to accomplish this important goal. If you drop your population allocation, those people are to go back into the farmland and rural allocation that they came from. Although insufficient, in my opinion, option D is the most reasonable and justifiable option." You know, there's, if you look at the reserve, it's surrounded by future city and current city. It's sort of a little island that's been drawn around. It really will correct an irregular boundary that was intended to be temporary. The fire station that you heard about is needed for the Samish neighborhood area, North U Street, UGA area. The entire area is deficient in fire LOS. And whether or not the areas, the U Street Reserve is included, you still need a fire station. You still need to build one in that area. As far as the financial analysis goes, I've given this to you before, but the finance director explained that the model includes things such as all of the water comp plan items that are going to happen and be funded and built that are necessary for a larger proportion of the city than just that yellow area you see. You know, the pressure, the water pressure, there's an issue there, so you need to build that tank, whether or not U Street comes in. In fact, most of the high expenses you need to deal with whether or not the reserve is reactivated. These people can help pay for those services with their tax dollars. I think that's a really important thing to remember. And I had a couple of notes. The reason that the area was--
Thank you, Clayton.
Oh, all right, thank you.
It's tough. I agree with you. Dick Conneboy.
I will be brief. Richard Conneboy, I live on South 46th Street here in Bellingham. I'd like you to consider the lowest possible population forecast. I'm not going to go into the reasons for that. All this stuff was given to the Planning Commission, which gave it short shrift. I think if you look back at the packet, the public comments from Larry Horowitz and John McLaughlin, who just spoke here, that you will find adequate rationale to reject these higher growth forecasts. That being said, I never really felt represented during those commission hearings. I think we were largely ignored, and I think that's unfortunate. And I think the fact that on the 16th of July, when three people showed up for the Planning Commission meeting, might tell you a story that people aren't feeling heard, so they don't even bother to show up anymore. I would also like to ask you to consider that we have a, we still have an extremely fragile economy. And I am not very optimistic about the next couple of years and where our economy might be going. I think we have a stock market bubble, 18,000 Dow, which is unsustainable. That's going to fall apart soon. I think we're going to find ourselves in the situation where we might have been back in 2006 if we were transported back there, not knowing what was going to happen in 2007. So I'd be very careful in doing any growth planning that depends upon growth in the economy, because I just don't think it's going to happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bob Carmichael? Anybody else line up, or we're going to close the public hearing after Bob?
Thank you, Bob Carmichael, 1700 D Street. I am here on behalf of Kitec. And I've heard a lot about population. I've read a lot about population, and I've been part of processes like this for a number of years. And I've heard experts on both sides. And one thing that I'm absolutely convinced of is that nobody really knows for sure what the population growth is going to be over the next 20 years. That's a very challenging thing to predict. What I do know is that the population projection that everyone has been calling the high population projection, which comes from the Burke study, is within the medium-range population projection by the Office of Financial Management, which is the state agency that sets those numbers out and which the Growth Management Act says you should take a look at when you're doing your planning. And so if it's within the medium range, it couldn't be too far off. At least, well, I don't know. It might be far off. But it's within the responsible range of planning for council members to be considering. Why should you consider perhaps planning for a higher growth rate? Because you will not be caught unawares. You will begin your planning process sooner. It is a long process to bring houses to the market. I told the Planning Commission this. I won't go into great detail, but before you can even start, you have to have a request for annexation. This is assuming the property comes into the UGA, the Kitec property, in 2016, which is when the county council makes the decision. Then you have to go through an annexation process, which is going to require an annexation study. It's going to require negotiations with the city over annexation and costs. There's going to have to be a process before the Planning Commission, before the city council, before a decision on annexation is even made. Once that happens, assuming it does, then a preliminary plat has to be developed. There has to be more public hearings before the Planning Commission, before the council. before the planning commission, before the council, CIPA review, perhaps an EIS, critical areas review. Goes to the planning commission, goes to the council, let's say that gets approved. Then there's design, designing of the development. It takes time. Plats are intensively engineered. It goes through a long process with the city. It has to be approved. Once those hurdles are cleared, then the developer can consider starting to build infrastructure, which again, is gonna take time, at least a season for one phase, perhaps two seasons. By the time product gets to market, we're talking several years out.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you very much.
Thank all of you. Is there anybody else who wants to speak before I close the public hearing? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing and turn back to council for questions or comments, knowing that this will be going to the planning committee in the future. Mr. Sepler.
If I might just point to correct the record. The question was raised several times by commenters where the TDR component was of the planning commission. As council might recall, the joint resolution of all the cities required that to be included in any recommendation that came forward. So that's all of the incorporated cities in Waukam County agreed as part of Resolution 2014013 to include the TDRs for Lake Waukam. So that's the origin of that, and it's been before this body.
Any questions for anybody else? Jack?
Rick, and that's only if a UGA area, a new UGA area comes into-
That's correct.
Into the city. So if we didn't have a new UGA, we wouldn't have to worry about the TDR issue. Thank you.
Okay, before we take our break and do the rest of our business, Mr. Levine, you can come up and make your comments now.
Steph from Sutton.
Yeah, join the club.
Hi, you all know me now. I'm a medical marijuana patient. I use medical marijuana for intractable pain. I've had two joints and a foot replaced. I need to have my shoulder and knee on the right side replaced as well. I'm very worried with what the state is doing to medical marijuana and medical marijuana patients and the availability of it. I'm so sensitive to insecticides. My eyes were tearing from whatever you guys used to spray this place today. I mean, I can barely breathe from it. I'm almost sick to my stomach, and I've got a really nasty headache in the back of my neck from the insecticide that this room was treated with. You all probably can't smell it now, and you're probably used to it. But it's that kind of stuff that the state is gonna allow to be put into the marijuana that they're offering us in 502 stores. I want to be able to get my organically grown marijuana from medical marijuana collectives, just like I do now, from Northern Cross, from places like that, from places that I know are safe. I want to be able to grow it myself so I know that it's safe. They want to limit me. They want to limit my access to it. It's not fair. It's, I have rights to do it now. They want to take them away from me for no reason at all. I don't believe that's fair. I believe the city should stand up for my rights and the rights of other medical marijuana patients. I won't take opioids. I was almost killed by an overdose at Alderwood Nursing Home, and I'll state that on the record. Alderwood Nursing Home gave me an overdose that almost killed me. I went through withdrawal. They overdosed me on Coumadin the same day I had to be jailbroken from that nursing home, and the state inspector found nothing. But they took away my medical marijuana munchies because they were dangerous. That's about all I've gotta say.
Thank you, Mr. Levine.
Thank you all.
Thanks to all of you. We're gonna take a six-minute break and come back and finish our business. Okay, I'd like to bring the meeting back to order. Some semblance of order. Okay, we're gonna go now to our council standing committees. The first committee is planning, and Jack Weiss is the chair.
We're ready? Okay. This morning, we had one item. It was the consideration, oops, no, that's, I'm sorry. Went to the wrong one. All right, this morning, we had one item. It was the new construction and character issues associated with the historic residential districts. Neighborhood groups and individual residents have expressed concerns that the construction of larger, single-family homes in historic districts may adversely impact the character of these traditional neighborhoods. These commenters have asked the city to develop design guidelines to ensure that new construction is compatible in scale with the existing residential character. Staff has reviewed the issues associated with the new construction in historical, historic residential district and prepared a preliminary assessment to present to the council, which happened this morning. We had a pretty healthy discussion about the proposal that staff was presenting. They, one, they were interested in focusing in on the bulk and scale of new construction design and how that would interplay with, with an existing block of housing, particularly historic buildings, you know, homes in a block. There was a proposal to do a two-phase setup on developing draft regulations. Phase one had to do with an assessment of existing historic development patterns, development of revised bulk and dimensions, dimensional and related prescriptive design standards, a regulatory review by the planning commission and council, and then to implement and monitor. This phase was discussed by the planning committee, and a motion was made to approve that as, to recommend to the full council to approve that as staff direction and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All is opposed? Motion carries unanimously. End of committee. Thank you, sir. Public Works, Public Safety, Terry Bornerman's the chair.
Thank you, Gene. Today, we had one item before our committee. It was a bid award for the Carl Close Your Safe Routes to School project number ES0477. This project includes the installation of sidewalks, curb, gutter, illumination, and ADA ramps along the north side of Gladstone Street, east of Frank Jerry Fields, and the installation of mark crosswalks, curb, curb bulbs, ADA ramps, signage, and flashing school zone beacons at the intersection of Lincoln and Potter Street near the Carl Close your Elementary. The city received four bids, which were open on July 9, 2015. The lowest responsive and responsible bid was submitted by Bianchi Construction in the sum of $332,625.45. No sales tax. The engineer's estimate was $272,458.75. The committee recommended approval, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All is opposed? Motion carries 7-0. We now go to Parks and Recreation, and Roxanne Murphy's the chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. So we had two agenda items. The first one is a little bit interesting in how we handled it. It was a discussion about the Greenways 4 levy. So the time has come where we need to renew our Greenways levy, and we heard from my wonderful predecessor, Seth Fleetwood. He gave us great information about what the levy committee, which is comprised of so many different community members that have been working on this levy for a very long time. The things that they've been talking about, what I think we value is that so many of the philosophical approaches that they're taking to this are definitely in union with some of the wishes and the values that the council has about what we would like to see out of this Greenways levy. So it was a good discussion about how we would like to see possibly less acquisitions and more development, and definitely focusing more on how we're gonna reach out to the community and get more people involved with the Greenways levy, involving the Parks and Recreation Pro Plan and other things that we'll be working on as time goes on. The resolution that was in the council packet asked for a November 3 election, for this to go on the November 3 ballot. And there was no motion taken because there was thoughtful consideration for how we would involve the community and how we need to do the outreach, and we don't want to put too much pressure on the actual committee members that will be leading the campaign for this initiative. So thus, there is nothing to report on because we're not going to be pushing for November 3 anymore, but I want to make that clear. We will continue to work with the Greenways Levy Committee, and we will report on this in the future. And I just wanted to see if there's anything else that council members wanted to add.
Yeah.
Councilmember?
Yeah, I think it was important to add, you know, we looked at, and some of us did think the November 4, this November would be, make a whole lot of sense because of, one, it's not going to cost the citizens of Bellingham anything to put it on the ballot. Some of the other dates that are discussed are for next year, one being in April. And with that one, we're looking at it could possibly cost us $250,000 to $260,000, $150,000 to put it on for a special election, which is a lot of money when it comes to, for anything. And so, you know, that was, that was part of the discussion, and some of us felt that if we're going to put it on next year, that that would not be a good time to do it because we don't want to pay that kind of money. Just wondering what program, which one of our favorite programs will we take the money out of? And, you know, I know, I don't want to take it on any of the ones that I support, so I'd rather have it on a ballot at a time where we're not going to have to pay that high-end cost to do something. So I think that was an important element of that conversation.
Councilmember voice?
Thank you, Roxanne. Yeah, I concur with Terry, but the one thing I did want to go and say was that our staff, Peter Ruffato and Brian Henshaw, spent quite a bit of time putting together the agenda packet for, for tonight, with an anticipation that we might, we might choose a November ballot. The work that they did is not wasted. It is probably 95% of what they did do, as far as research and actual documentation of a resolution, can be used for whatever election date is chosen next year as it moves forward. So I want, first of all, I wanted just a shout out for, for those two, for the work that they've done. And second is just to, you know, make sure that the council realizes that this will be a fairly straightforward thing to go and put on the ballot.
And one other thing I wanted to bring up about why we didn't make a motion today was I think we would've had a majority of our committee supporting a November ballot. But having gone through this previously, when we put something on the ballot for voters and asking their support, I really feel it's important that we have more than just a majority of four to three, you know, just like the county putting a ballot measure on the jail with a four to three measure. That doesn't send a good, confident message. And I, for one, and I think Jack agrees, is the same thing, didn't want to bring a, something forward that maybe we could've got two more votes, maybe not, but it still wouldn't, it's not what I want to see. I want to see us as a council be able to have unanimous, or close to unanimous, when we're taking something to the voters and asking for their support for something over a 10-year period or something like that. So I know I didn't want to, and I don't think Councilman Weiss wanted to bring anything forward with, when we could see we wouldn't get a, a big majority. It's too important. This is, you know, the Greenways program is a very important program. We support it a lot.
I really want to thank you both for helping to define that, because it's a pretty big issue for us to consider. And this was not an easy decision to make, because there are really pros and cons of taking any approach, if it's November, if it's April, if it's the following November. But I just want to assure the community that the dialogue is going to continue. We will be doing great outreach to the community to see what your interests are in the Greenways levy as we go forward. And did council members have anything else they wanted to add? Okay. So moving on to the next agenda item, it was to repurpose the locomotive at Bloedel Donovan Park. So the Parks and Recreation Department was seeking approval to begin negotiations with the Northwest Railway Museum. There is an, there's, excuse me, a locomotive at Bloedel Donovan Park that we decided to advertise and see if anybody would be interested in bringing that locomotive back to life, because it's an issue in our parks areas in terms of safety and the ways that the city can't necessarily afford to take care of it. And so what the Parks Department received were submissions for people that were interested in repurposing the locomotive, and it would like to go with the Northwest Railway Museum as the most viable option. And what's gonna happen is the Parks Department would bring back a negotiated agreement for us to consider. So it's not that we are going to be surpassing this immediately. So that proposal will be brought back for council, and the option to negotiate with Northwest Railway, which is, that's what was approved by the Parks and Recreation Committee, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? Like I mentioned this afternoon, this was a tough one for me, but I'm gonna respect the process and go ahead and support this. I would like just to ask one thing to James, when you negotiate with him, that you make sure wherever this goes, that Bellingham history is kept with it. And my grandfather would be proud of that, and I think this community would be proud of it, too. So when you talk to them, hopefully, they will look at the history of this and where it was and how long it was working in Bellingham, and that would be, I would be satisfied with that. So I, I think the whole city would be, too.
Okay. I'd be happy to do that and make sure that that history is, is attached to it, whatever happens to it, and we'll bring that proposal back to you.
Okay, thank you. Any further? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carries 7-0. I should've mentioned his name. His name was Clarence Knutson. If you want to see the article, it was in the 1963 Bellingham Herald, the day he retired, and it's hanging on the wall. So you should go down and take a look at it. He's better looking than I was.
[laughing]
Lot shorter, but-
That's a great end to the committee.
Thank you very much. The Finance and Personnel Committee is chaired by Pinky Vargas.
We had two items in front of us today. The first one is information only. It was about our 911 phone system purchase. Our current 911 phone system is nearing the end of life and will not be compatible with next-generation 911 technology. Various phone systems have been researched within the state, and the Entrado phone system was chosen. This system has been the industry standard in our state and is utilized by our neighboring counties. This will be beneficial for the backup services during any sort of disaster. The system will be paid for by existing 911 tax dollars, and the installation will be done in the fall of 2015. And it looks as though they are under the proposed budget, which was $700,000, and our fiscal impact right now is $559,000. So that was good news. Information only. Our second item is an ordinance relating to the 2015 budget appropriating an additional $35,000 from estimated ending restricted reserves in the library gift fund. So the request for an increase of $35,000 in spending authority for the purchase of digital media, staff development, and summer reading software. And this went through as a unanimous vote of approval for this evening, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carries 7-0. And that's the end of the committee, isn't it?
We've got Lake Waukam.
Oh, I'm sorry. That was the end of your committee.
The end of my committee.
End of your committee, okay. We'll now go to the Lake Waukam Reservoir Natural Resources Committee chaired by Dan Hamill.
Thank you, Gene. We had four items before us today. First item was pursuant to the Aquatic Invasive Species Prevention Program. That is a multi-jurisdictional program designed to prevent infestations of invasive species that can compromise essential- program designed to prevent infestations of invasive species that can compromise essential public infrastructure, lake ecology, recreational activity, and shorelines. Council had requested information on the feasibility of funding this program exclusively on the fees charged for the permits. Staff presented information from the last two and a half years of revenue and expenditures, which engendered a spirited conversation between council and staff regarding goals around keeping participation high and also trying to provide for cost recovery for this program. This first item was for information only. Second item was a interlocal agreement between the City of Bellingham and Wacom County to finance the 2015 Aquatic Invasive Species Boat Inspection Program, bringing this to the committee with a mixed recommendation of two, two for, and one against, and I so move.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, any discussion? Mr. Weiss.
I was agin it for the reasons of the fact that I don't believe that we have a real clear picture of how we're going to get the cost recovery process that the council has been interested in for the last few years. I realize it doesn't have anything to do with these particular interlocals, but I, I feel like it's an important thing that we really should be pushing for, and I don't know. I, I would like to have that as part of this whole thing, and I know that it can't happen, so I'm just going to vote against it.
Mr. Littlequist, then, Terry.
Well, I'd like to, they really are central issues, and I'm going to vote in favor of this next interlocal for the current funding of the IAS, but I agree, it would have been nice if the committee and this council were able to register a stronger opinion on the cost recovery piece. I, I do think that 30 to 40% that we've achieved historically has not been high enough, but I think I actually agree with the staff that going much higher is going to be difficult. And I think the solution to full cost recovery really comes from using statewide boat registration fees and statewide funding mechanisms to make up for our local program, or for that matter, to institute a statewide lake inspection program so that our costs are lower and our program is cheaper, and maybe our fees could be full cost recovery. But this one interlocal is a separate enough matter that I'm going to be supporting it.
Terry.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, along with Jack on this one, I'm not going to support it because it's, it's about, I just don't feel majority of the citizens of Bellingham should be subsidizing the cost of people that want to run their boats on the lake. And I know, I understand staff's arguments that it's about the water quality, but if we really care about the water quality, we shouldn't be running motorboats on there, and we shouldn't even be launching from Bloedel Donovan. And that's been kind of my point from the beginning of this, that yes, somebody else may, but do we continue saying, yeah, but they'll do it, so we'll just say it's okay? And I don't think it's okay, and I especially don't think it's okay that we should be subs, you know, the majority should be subsidizing a few to run boats to spill oil in the lake, and so I'm not going to vote for it. And I know this is, but this is the reasons.
Okay, thank you, Terry. All those in favor of the motion will say aye. Aye. All opposed?
No.
Motion carries five to two with council members Weiss and Bourniman opposed.
Third item was also an interlocal agreement between the City of Bellingham and Lake Wacom Water and Sewer District to finance the 2015 Aquatic Invasive Species Boat Inspection Program, and bringing this to the council with a mixed recommendation, I so move.
Mr. Weiss.
I was agin it for the reasons of the fact that I don't believe that we have a real clear picture of how we're going to get the cost recovery process that the council has been interested in for the last few years. I realize it doesn't have anything to do with these particular interlocals, but I, I feel like it's an important thing that we really should be pushing for, and I don't know. I, I would like to have that as part of this whole thing, and I know that it can't happen, so I'm just going to vote against it.
Mr. Littlequist, then, Terry.
Well, I'd like to, they really are central issues, and I'm going to vote in favor of this next interlocal for the current funding of the IAS, but I agree, it would have been nice if the committee and this council were able to register a stronger opinion on the cost recovery piece. I, I do think that 30 to 40% that we've achieved historically has not been high enough, but I think I actually agree with the staff that going much higher is going to be difficult. And I think the solution to full cost recovery really comes from using statewide boat registration fees and statewide funding mechanisms to make up for our local program, or for that matter, to institute a statewide lake inspection program so that our costs are lower and our program is cheaper, and maybe our fees could be full cost recovery. But this one interlocal is a separate enough matter that I'm going to be supporting it.
Terry.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, along with Jack on this one, I'm not going to support it because it's, it's about, I just don't feel majority of the citizens of Bellingham should be subsidizing the cost of people that want to run their boats on the lake. And I know, I understand staff's arguments that it's about the water quality, but if we really care about the water quality, we shouldn't be running motorboats on there, and we shouldn't even be launching from Bloedel Donovan. And that's been kind of my point from the beginning of this, that yes, somebody else may, but do we continue saying, yeah, but they'll do it, so we'll just say it's okay? And I don't think it's okay, and I especially don't think it's okay that we should be subs, you know, the majority should be subsidizing a few to run boats to spill oil in the lake, and so I'm not going to vote for it. And I know this is, but this is the reasons.
Okay, thank you, Terry. All those in favor of the motion will say aye. Aye. All opposed?
No.
Motion carries five to two with council members Weiss and Bourniman opposed.
Third item was also an interlocal agreement between the City of Bellingham and Lake Wacom Water and Sewer District to finance the 2015 Aquatic Invasive Species Boat Inspection Program, and bringing this to the council with a mixed recommendation, I so move.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor will say aye. Aye. All opposed?
No.
Motion carries five to, Councilman Bourniman and Weiss opposed.
Final item was a report from the Lake Wacom Policy Group. This consists of representatives from the Lake Wacom Water and Sewer District, the Wacom County Council, the Southern Valley Community Association, and Bellingham City Council. We meet monthly to discuss issues as it relates to Lake Wacom. The July 13 meeting covered performance, a review of performance measures as it relates to the Lake Wacom program. I'll touch on a few of these. Total maximum daily load, or the TMDL, and phosphorus control. One of the items that we looked at as a metric is, are the total pounds of phosphorus removal from surface water by various intervention strategies, including stormwater facilities, other facilities, homeowner projects. Another, one of the items was aquatic invasive species, the total number of boating permits issued, drinking water systems, water disinfectant byproducts compared to limits, and also general watershed protections. The consensus of the policy group was to move duplicative items from the city's websites. The other item that we covered was the homeowner incentive program initial research findings. So there was a study that was conducted in April and in May with homeowners, or folks that had participated in the homeowner incentive pilot project that was sent to 227 participants. Ninety folks responded for a 40% response rate. I wanted to touch on some of the key findings as a result of this first survey. Eighty-six percent of participants were satisfied with the program and cited staff support, incentives, and helping the environment as motivators. On the reverse side, barriers included that the program requirements and permitting are too complicated, reimbursement levels are not high enough for certain projects, and that labor and time commitments required were too onerous. Recommendations for program design around, arising from the research included increased engagement with contractors to create more of a seamless and streamlined process for consumers, streamline permitting processes, increases in staff levels of assistance, and expanding non-monetary incentives. The next meeting for the policy group will be on September 21, 2015, at 2:30, City of Bellingham Fireplace Room in the Municipal Court Building, 625 Halleck Street, and that's the end of committee.
Thank you very much, Dan. We now go to the committee, the whole, where we had six items. The first item was, went out of order, was the second item, Technology Update Report. Looks like this. It was brought forward by Marty Mulholland, our IT Director. You know, it's absolutely amazing what they do with all the equipment we have, all the employees, all the computers, all the scanners, all, every, I mean, it is absolutely unbelievable where technology is going. She gave a progress report on a whole lot of things, including public television and a few other things, but it was a great report. It's online if, if anybody's interested. The next item was a state legislative briefing by Ben from McBride Affairs. What's his last name?
Ben Buckholz.
Ben Buckholz. He gave us a briefing of wonderful news on how it went for us this year in the state legislature. We're very happy with that setup. I think it's one of the better lobbying things we've had since Dick was down there all by himself. I think these guys really do a great job for us, and we're very lucky to have them, so we're, we're pretty happy about that. The next was a resolution requesting amendments to the Wacom County Incarceration Prevention and Reduction Task Force. Mayor Lindvile presented this to the county, when was it, last week, or the week before last?
Last week.
Last Tuesday. It was debated on by the county council, some changes were made, and I'll, I'll let you go ahead and, and state your position, why it's not suitable for us.
Yeah, it, it's really up to the, the county council now to decide if they want to do something with it. I would say the sooner we start planning for alternatives, the better. So I would love it if they would take this up separate from whatever the jail outcome or agreement is, and start planning for use, expanding our alternatives sooner rather than later, or looking for alternatives right now, which may be cheaper than the bed, the bed days that we're spending money on. As we know, the jail is overcrowded, and, and from the reports from the sheriff and from the county executive, they're looking over time about how they're going to reduce that population. And if they're going to be able to reduce it, I'd love the idea that we will be looking at prevention and alternatives and diversion instead of just, instead of something that maybe is not going to help people break a cycle. So you have nothing to do with it? We just brought it forward, you can smile or not, and, and, and hopefully that they'll look at it just as some meat to put to their task force that they'll be completing. So that's all.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else want to say any more about this? Okay, seeing none, we will move on. Or, did you forget something? No.
Okay.
Oh, you did.
I forgot something.
Just a guess.
Well, the, the, it, I think it's, there is time to, for, for us to decide if you would like to adopt the resolution, or make some changes, or state that the council supports this, but that's entirely up to you.
Okay.
I feel better that I've been able to say to them publicly what's important to me, and so I got to do that.
I am not hearing anything from the council, so we will move on, and thank you for your efforts. Michael.
The one reason I'm not sitting in passing the resolution is I think part of the purpose behind the resolution has already been achieved. I believe you already delivered part of the city's message to the county. Doubling down and putting in a resolution, I don't think makes the communication any clearer, so, you know, I don't think there's any particular reason to go for the resolution. I think we've had a little bit of back and forth, we've had a little bit of movement, and we'll just accept what we've got so far, accept that incremental improvement, so thanks for creating the progress you did create.
And to be completely fair, it's been to me, who, I stated my opinions weeks ago or months ago, or however long this has been, but it's been confusing to watch the county council meetings and to listen to their deliberations and what gets thrown back over here. I mean, I've been pretty supportive of the new jail and what's going on, but having listened to the last couple of meetings, there seems to be a, I, I think we just need a little keel here and try to come up with some leveler heads so we don't get too worked up about this, because this is the future of Wacom County, future Bellingham, so we're going to have to come together at some point, and hopefully we can do that. Anything else on this? Okay, seeing none, we had one other item, well, two other items. The next item was an update negotiation with Kai-Tec USA regarding development of its EAE-9 subdivision to the Cordoba PUD. This afternoon, we voted to have a public hearing, which will be coming up in the near future. We have one set of minutes. When is it? The 6th of July, evening minutes.
I move approval July 6, evening.
Second.
Minutes.
Motion been made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor will say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries seven zero. And that vote this afternoon on Kai-Tec was seven oh to have the public hearing, just so everybody realized that. All the new business, you weren't here, so let er rip.
First of all, I just wanted to say it was really great that Mayor Kelly, Councilmember Littlequist, and I had a chance to march in the Bellingham Pride Parade, and what a great function that was, and I just thought it was an incredible after-party and celebration of marriage equality, so it was great to support our community that way. I also recently had a chance to ride my bike 44 miles in the Tour de Wacom. I wanted to bring this up to council's attention because, boy, I met so many people from so many different places that really valued our cycling community and said things to me like, hey, I know I just met you, but did you know that this city has a really great bicycle master plan? And then I told them who I was, and boy, did we have fun talking about that. But I just wanted to bring this up, is these organized rides, you know, it may be, it may seem a little annoying for our residents when you have a bunch of cyclists coming down Holly Street, but boy, does it do a lot for our economic development, for hotel tax, for the money that they spend on our small business community and the things that they learn about Bellingham. And my last item is that council recently received an email from an individual who was very upset with us about passing rental registration. I asked this woman, emailed her back, and asked for her phone number, and I had a good chance to talk with her. The reason she's upset is because her property owner decided that he wanted no part of this rental registration issue, and he is selling his home immediately, and she is upset rightfully that she will become homeless as of August 1st. So I felt this was a bit of an emergency in the sense that we passed an ordinance and this unintended consequence came through. So she said that she knows of others who are going through the exact same thing, the exact same story, and I asked her to please do outreach to those people if they would be willing to communicate with us. And then I also was sure to refer her to resources in the Opportunity Council, the Wacom Association of Realtors, and any other organizations. And I'm really glad this caught the attention of the mayor and the mayor's administration. And so as a part of the rental registration outreach, we will also be pulling together information on resources that can assist if people wind up in these situations. My last little story is that the, a member of the Wacom Realtors let me know that she's dealing with some 12 people that are in the same circumstance. So I really hope this is something that council can keep an eye on as we learn how this program may be affecting people in ways that we didn't intend. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Michael, and then Dan.
I just had a small thing to add on to your comment about the Tour de Wacom. That event actually is already supported by the city through the tourism dollar, so the Tourism Commission has used the hotel bed tax to promote just these sort of events that are not just enjoyable ways for locals, but start building the brand for people to come and get to know Bellingham. It's not the only event like that, there's actually a long list, and they're not large grants for the most part, not like the Signature Event, but they're small grants to help events like Tour de Wacom.
Dan.
I wanted to thank Bellingham Police Department, Public Works, and Parks for allowing me to do a ride-along last week with Code Compliance Officer Claudia Viscaras and Sergeant Gateras, and 30 Parks employees to do cleanups of homeless camps in Bellingham. It was pretty eye-opening to see the work that those individuals do in often dangerous conditions with needles present in many of these camps and other items. I just wanted to thank Bellingham Fire for allowing me to do a ride-along with Engine Company III on July 7. I wanted to thank in particular Todd Legesti, Mark Chamberlain, and Jeff Hanson, and also wanted to thank our community's volunteers who showed up and provided a welcome atmosphere on last Friday for Project Homeless Connect. We had 180 volunteers on Friday. We had 50 service providers who are providing professional services to people who are experiencing homelessness in our community. homelessness in our community, and we held, held that event at Bellingham High School. We had over five hun, or five hundred and thirty people come through, so it was very eye-opening to a lot of folks. We had, we heard some pretty amazing things that day. One of the, the, one of the words that I want to just put out there that I heard from volunteers was, it was a transformative experience, so very eye-opening, so I just want to thank those volunteers.
Thank you, Dan. Pinky.
I just wanted to let everybody know that Waccaum County and the Tourism Commission had an agency come in called Roger Brooks that did an evaluation of Waccaum County and kind of looked at it through a tourist's eyes, sort of kind of secret shopped our county and went from every city, every local city that we have here in our county and reviewed it in regards to what it would be like in regards to wayfinding, how do we connect to other cities? And it was an amazing and eye-opening evaluation, and all of that information is going to be available for people to review. It was videotaped and all the slides are being put in to a presentation and that will be on bellingham.org and that will be available soon. So I encourage everyone to take a look at it through someone who has not experienced our county's eyes.
Okay, anything else? Terry?
Yeah, this afternoon, I brought up an idea to the council and tonight I want to make a motion regarding that, and that's that we hold a public hearing to consider, to discuss the pros and cons of the charter, the county's charter review amendments that will be on the ballot, so I would like to move that.
Motion been made and seconded multiple times. Roxanne was the one that, that you got her. Okay, any further discussion before we vote, but we're, we're gonna, we'll find a moderator hopefully, somebody who can actually, we've, we've used several people.
And if we vote in the affirmative, ask that we, you know, then work with Marie and others to find the proper date and if somebody wants to work with me or whatever to find moderators and pros and cons, you know, I'll volunteer to do that part, but or with, you know.
Okay.
Yeah.
All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Anything else? Jack?
One last thing, I guess this is now old business, but based on our discussions this morning or this afternoon and this evening about the invasive, aquatic invasive species, I had a motion that I wanted to, to see whether or not there's support for. Move to request that the administration draft a resolution to bring back to council at an August meeting that states council policy for cost recovery in the aquatic invasive species will be forty-five percent in 2016 and sixty percent in 2017, realizing it's, it's about thirty-three percent right now. And it has been ever since the, the program started three years ago. We haven't bumped up the cost recovery percentage at all, it's just been stagnant, and so this motion is to help lift up that, that percentage higher towards that cost recovery, that goal that we were looking at. So that's my motion.
Second. Motion been made and seconded, any discussion? Michael?
I assume those numbers were, are open to discussion, the percentage recovery numbers.
They're, they're, yeah, they're, they're just placeholders for discussion at the time that we talk about the resolution.
Anything else? I mean, I don't mind looking at it, this doesn't cement us to anything, it'll get the discussion going. I know you've been advocating that for a long time, but I, I, I understand where the staff's coming on this too, so let's go ahead. Follows, oh, mayor, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, as Ted mentioned this afternoon, I went into this believing that we could do cost recovery for this program because this is our drinking water reservoir. So I would like to have a serious conversation about it because it doesn't just involve us. If it was just something we could do, there's a lot more, but clearer actions we could take than doing an invasive species program to protect our drinking water supply, but we are not in charge of the whole lake. So I think we need to make sure that we're, that, that we're meeting that water quality standard that Ted was talking about, or at least water protection standard, and bring our partners along because the best thing is when we, we're all doing it the same, and I think this program has been one where we finally got the county, the sewer and water district, and the city all on the same page. So I look forward to the discussion, I think it's a good one, and I think that we need to talk about it potentially in a, maybe a little broader context than just the cost recovery, but how we'd actually implement it and what the unintended or intended consequences might be.
Okay, Pinky.
Just a quick question, Jack, you said by August?
It doesn't have to be by then.
I, I, I think that we should give some, the staff, an opportunity, who've already just been working on this, to have some time to kind of bring something forward. It seems, it seems pretty fast. Can we give, can we alter that a little bit?
Well, it's a one-page resolution. I, I wouldn't think that there would be much in the way of actually drafting anything, you know, a few wherances and just a, a simple statement that says.
Yeah, well, how about the second week of January? Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll figure it out. All of us.
I guess, you know, it seems like we've already, you know, the staff's had the two months to go and get to this particular point since the last time we talked about it, and so they already know the issues. They, they were very well, you know, versed in the issues right now, and it just seems to me that, you know, another month, they could easily come up with a resolution for us to go and talk about it more.
How about let's modify it and make it the second meeting in August, because the first meeting in August is just a couple of weeks.
Well, it's, it says any meeting in August.
Okay, we'll let it shoot for the later part, okay. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll now go to executive session report. We had three items. The first item is potential litigation. Staff provide information on a potential litigation matter, information only, no action was taken. The second was an update on potential litigation, City of Bellingham versus Sang T. Y., Waccaum County Superior Court, and Sang T. Y. E.T.A.L., City of Bellingham, Washington State Court of Appeals. Staff providing an update on this condemnation action filed the City of Bellingham to acquire the Aloha Motel property pursuant to the Washington's Condemnation of Blighted Properties Act. I will now happily entertain a motion authorizing the mayor to execute a settlement agreement with the following terms. A, the city will pay the Ys the sum of one million, five hundred and eighty-eight thousand, five hundred and twelve dollars as just compensation for the Aloha Motel property located at three oh one and three fifteen North Samish Way, Bellingham, Washington. B, the parties will dismiss the pending lawsuit and appeal with prejudice and without an award of attorney's fees or costs. Closing is expected to occur on September first, 2015.
I so moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, do you need clarification on the second? I do too. Boy.
Give it time.
We'll give it to the mustache guy. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Yay.
That is good news. The last was potential property acquisition, staff providing an update on potential property acquisition, information only, no action was taken. The mayor's report.
Thank you. Before I start my report, I'm going to make a suggestion, Jack, for the wording of the resolution, since you seem to have an idea about what you'd like it to say. If you could give somebody that.
Who do you want me to talk to? To talk to Mark?
No, I, just give us the wording. I mean, because you already know what you want it to say, and I don't know if staff could necessarily figure out everything that you wanted in there. Okay.
Okay.
That would be good. Thank you. I only have one approval. I'm appointing Lori Cluff to the Museum Foundation Board.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
And then three informational appointments that I've made that I'll just read to you. Katie Stevens and Eric Scott to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, Ken Levinson to the Bellingham-Waccaum County Commission on Domestic Violence, and reappointment of Jim Gebhardt to the Public Works Advisory Board. I'm very pleased that, that council, that the council took action tonight on the Aloha Motel. That's been a longstanding problem. I know it'll make certain neighbors really happy when they keep asking me, what are you doing? But I think it's a, it's a, it's a good resolution to an ongoing problem of definitely public health and safety, so thank you very much for taking action on that.
Thank you.
And with that.
Sayonara. Consent agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded? Any discussion? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Final consideration of ordinances.
Agenda Bill two zero eight seven nine, in ordinance amending the 2015, 2016 adopted budget appropriating one million, three hundred and thirteen hundred thousand dollars in public works expenditures from estimated ending reserves in the street, wastewater, and facilities administration funds for projects, goods, and services that were inadvertently omitted from the 2015 reappropriation ordinance.
Move third and final.
Second. Motion been made and seconded, any discussion? Roll call.
Terry Bornham.
Aye.
Dan Hamel.
Aye.
Gene Knudsen.
Aye.
Michael Lillquist.
Aye.
Roxanne Murphy.
Aye.
Pinky Vargas.
Aye.
Jack Weiss.
Aye.
Ordinance passes seven zero. Agenda Bill two zero eight nine two, in ordinance amending the 2015, 2016 adopted budget, increasing revenue in the street fund by sixty thousand dollars as a result of a State of Washington Transportation Improvement Board grant and appropriating sixty thousand dollars in related expenditures.
Third and final.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, any discussion? Roll call.
Dan Hamel.
Aye.
Gene Knudsen.
Aye.
Michael Lillquist.
Aye.
Roxanne Murphy.
Aye.
Pinky Vargas.
Aye.
Jack Weiss.
Aye.
Terry Bornham.
Aye.
Motion.
Ordinance passes seven zero.
Thank you very much. The next meeting of the Bellingham City Council will be August tenth, 2015, meeting adjourned.